On your video recording of this public meeting, I may transmit the meeting. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions may be made, whether received or unreceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. We'll do a roll call of members present: Ms. Carrera.
Present.
Ms. Ashley.
Present.
Ms. Gorgo.
Present.
Mr. Pasternak.
Present.
Ms. Solomon.
Present.
Mr. Gortas.
Here.
The chair is present. Also with us this evening are Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Jeffrey Spooner, our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Raquel Pellerin, and our Director of Curriculum, Ms. Elizabeth Haskell. At this time, I ask if you could please rise slightly.
Please.
For the last meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great and glorious stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please forgive me also to have brought in the bar while recording this. Please note that the next regularly scheduled meeting of this committee is Tuesday, July 15, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. here in the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School Library. My first item on the agenda this evening under new business is an update from our new service provided child. Please hold.
How is everyone today?
Good.
Nice to see everyone. Nice to introduce myself to some of the people I haven't met yet. So just a quick update about what we've been doing this year. Very successful year. The high school continues to be a great spot for us and continues to grow with our menu, with our participation. So I'm just really happy to share this stuff with you. So this is our Chartwell's team that supports Somerset Berkeley, myself, Mr. Michael Carr, the Student Engagement Manager. He was just hired in December. He's a Student Engagement Manager, and he is out there having events such as Global Leaks, Student Choice, really communicating with the students and getting their feedback. Ms. Erin Long, sorry she couldn't make it today, she was planning, but she came down to get her vertigo, so she could not make it down there. I'm Mr. Thomas Donalds, to Eric Memento. All right, kids with school lunch, more healthy whole grains, more fat-free and low-fat dairy, more fruits and veggies, gives them the energy to make it through a full day. You know, we've really improved our breakfast this year by adding all whole grain Belgian waffles with fruit toppings. We've also thrown in some scrambled eggs one day a week. I'm just trying to get students to participate in breakfast, because everybody knows when you have a full belly going into your first period class, you're not concentrating on your stomach rumbling, you're concentrating on your books, your academics, and stuff like that. Also, still continuing free meals this year. As far as we know, and it looks like we're leaning that way, there will be free meals again next year. Hasn't been fully approved yet, but we are leaning that way. Between both districts, over 311,000 meals. You know, Somerset Berkeley alone this year has had over 94,000 lunches and over 10,000 breakfasts we serve out of this building to our students. Service, this is what's important to you. Service, you know, we take care of our staff here. We spend a lot of time, effort, and funds into making sure that our staff here has the proper PPE protective equipment, training, ServSafe that they are going back to this year, this summer, to get recertified. It's a seven-year certification. Chartwells require it every three years. I take them under that wing. I prefer them to do it every three years, so they don't forget what the regulations are, and stuff like that. So our staff will be going back to ServSafe training this year. We have an orientation every year for eight hours, where we do a lot of training as well and bring them up to date with the new regulations that we hold in this building as well. You know, nutrition education, we had a pop-up event this year where we just wanted to, again, focus on breakfast, and it was overnight oats. You know, overnight oats is something that's easy for students to make at home. We gave them recipe cards. They tried it. We gave them a pumpkin cranberry with some chocolate in it. Kids really had, actually, the students that tried it actually really enjoyed it, it was something that they really liked. So we were just kind of really focused on that. We did some kale chips this year at all schools. You know, kale chips were either loved or they could pass. But it was something, we had a table out there, the students got to get a cup of it, and they really got to try it. Student Voice. We have Student Choice event this year, where we had our theme Made to Melt, also Mac and Cheeseology. Mac and Cheeseology was a butternut squash mac and cheese. So the butternut squash, we pureed it, it looked just like the cheese, we added a little bit of cheese with it, and actually got a pretty good amount of votes. But the real winner was Made to Melt, which was a tomato, mozzarella, basil grilled cheese. And that one, and that has been on the menu since we had that winner. So that's one of our biggest sellers. Commitment, you know, we commit to never stop improving on our menu. We went from a four-week cycle this year to a five-week. So that means no student had the same meal within the four-week period, which was our main meal. We obviously have our commitment to making our standards certain stations, but our commitment to always improving and never stop improving and following trends. And then also, our commitment to speak with the students. I had a great time this year. I had two different civics groups classes, I had some food service meetings with some other students, where we had the students get involved, and they actually put out their own surveys, right? And a couple of those surveys came out with, one, we want some more breakfast, we want some different options, we just don't want the same old breakfast sandwiches that we put out there, we want something different. So that's why we brought in the Belgian waffles. I don't know if you guys have seen them, but we invested in four waffle irons. They're big, the ones you see, like if you're in college. We trained the students to make their own Belgian waffles. They're in there, they put the batter in, they put it, they flip it, and they make their own waffle. It was pretty dicey the first month, but after that, they started to go. And then we had the civics class, we had really good meetings. What came out of that was they really wanted something that they could eat after hours, in between classes, without going down to the calf. So we really discussed on getting a new vending machine. I'm sorry, I was there, but we bought a brand-new vending machine, custom-designed for the school, with the school label on it. It is air-conditioned, it is a refrigerator, it has sensors on it to tell me, and I'm sure it'll go to the facilities saying, hey, this is down, we're shutting it down because we can't have this food go below that temperature. The students got to build what they wanted inside of it. So they decided they wanted some room for salads, sandwiches, simple chips. And it is also Wi-Fi ready as well. So we'll get that up and going. It was actually ahead of schedule, it was three to four months, we actually got it in within two months. So we're working with our service team with them, and it actually can integrate to the food service system, where they can just type in their code or scan their badge, and they'll be able to grab a free meal out of there. Or they can purchase it à la carte. So again, always investing, always looking at new technology. And the students, I have to really give them credit, they worked really hard on it. They helped design it, they helped scout out the building and where we were going to put it. We had to make sure that there was one internet that was be received there and had a power source. We walked around the building and defined exactly where to put it, so. Again, you know, what we do, we do nutrition stuff, but we also like to have fun. When you have fun, we did a section with a popcorn day, right? We had five or six different spices that were all compliant, healthy, and not full of sugar. We did a buffalo chicken, we did a chocolate with just real cocoa on it, and the students got to grab their popcorn, and they got to put their own stuff on it. Sweet and spicy was one of them. They really had fun. That gets, lets the student from services really communicate with the students, right? Know who we are. And the best part of me is being here, 11 years now, is actually seeing those students that were in first, second grade, they just come right in and talk to me, but it also lets me speak to students that I genuinely see so from Berkeley. I get to meet a lot of students from Berkeley that I didn't see come up through the system, but they're now here with us at Somerset Berkeley. Local farms, we did a broccoli thing, where we have the students have some broccoli, we showed them where the broccoli was ordered from. We work straight with the state with that, with the DOD program we are part of. We get funds every year, we sign up for, and we get local farmers that work with the Department of Defense, and we get to order it right from those farmers in the community. So it's fun showing them where it comes from and what they have. We had Made to Melt over there, some students at the event that we had here when they were trying it. We had a Global Leaks event, and one of them, what I wanted to highlight today, was students got to go and make their own flavor of guacamole. We had a guacamole station, poor Mike was there, was mashing guacamole the whole time, and we got to talk to the students, and they had a chance to build their own guacamole station, what they wanted, and their personalized guacamole. We had the students grab some whole grain chips with the guacamole, and it was a great way, again, to speak with the student, engage with the student, and see what they really want. That's what we tried to do all the time, so it's providing happy food, right? Seeing the smiles of just a little bit of guacamole that they weren't expecting that day, it was great, it was a nice surprise that we could do for them. This building here alone, after every single day, we average over 700 meals a day. So we're putting out 700 meals a day. Our current enrollment, I believe, is 855-ish, so you can do the math, we have a great percentage that are having meals with us in a day, and we're touching a lot of students, and we're providing a lot of food on a daily basis. And that goes right into No Kid Hundred. We're offering stuff that they want with collaboration with the student. So we see what they want, we talk, we get that information, and we provide guacamole bar, we provide Made to Melt, because we knew, we talked with them, that their other favorite meal here that we serve the most of is their grilled cheeses. Grilled cheese, I think, for any students here, there is an Instagram of its own grilled cheese for Somerset Berkeley Regional High School, has its own Instagram. I love telling that story, because that was purely organic and grassroots. They built it, they made it, and it's a Somerset Berkeley Regional High School Instagram of grilled cheese. So we kind of knew through that that this would be something where, maybe they want to add something into that grilled cheese, right? They want to put a little tomato in it, see if they like it, and they like it, it comes out. Once every five weeks. Just some year-to-date stats from May. We serve over 116,000 meals, our sales of 500K, bottom-line surplus of $76,000. We do reinvest into our building, right? Since we've been here, and those new building, we've purchased a new freezer system, a new refrigerator system, four new ovens. We've put things back into the building with waffle irons, right? So we use our money that we make from revenue back and put it right back into the system, because that's where it belongs. I have to recognize, and I wouldn't be right if I didn't do it, our staff here is wonderful. They are the backbone of what we do. I'm here talking, but they make it happen on a daily basis. I'm very lucky to work with them. These two ladies were recognized this year, Ms. Maria Cudo, Ms. Lisa Bergeron. They both, Lisa's been here for nine years, Maria just started last year with us. Our manager is going on three years with us in the region. She is a great manager, she runs a great program for us. I have a lot of expectations I put on these folks, and they deliver, and that's why we cheers them. So just want to show you two of these guys, we love celebrating our staff, and they are the backbone of our program. Flexibility and responsiveness, we have maybe about, we have some severe people that need special meals. We provide those meals on a daily basis to about five or six students, and we give them five or six options with a schedule. We have flexibility when it comes to that, they deserve to have a meal like anybody else. Our managers, our staff, work with them, where they make sure we have a sanitized station, make sure that their meal is safe for them to eat on a daily basis. So we respond to what we need to do, and our staff steps up for that for them. Strong district administration support team, I can't thank Spooner, Raquel even more, Ms. Haskell, Ms. Robin, and everybody in that admin office. I'm very lucky to get to work with them a lot, they are very good to me, and they help me whatever I need to succeed, in which we do succeed because of them, so I want to thank you guys for that as well. Student engagement, I've showed you what we've been doing, we will never stop, and that's my promise and my commitment, is we won't stop trying to improve, we won't stop talking to the students, because once you stop losing that student voice, you don't have a program, because they're our customers, you know? And then just want to let you know, free meals again in our investments. Any questions?
Aaron, I'm curious, since you're the student here, do you have anything to add or anything from that that resonates with you or that you want to share?
Absolutely. You know, it's always a pleasure to see something new in the lunchroom, and, you know, at Popcorn Day, that was amazing.
What was your flavor?
I think I got the, it was like spicy churro or something like that?
Yeah.
Chili powder and cinnamon?
That was good.
That was good. I think I might have stolen a few from other people, but, you know.
I know, it's always tough when we have events like that, because if you have the first one, you know, we're like, we've got to make sure we have it for everyone, but the last one's like, let's go, let's get it out.
And to speak to the faculty here, I mean, yeah, they're amazing. I haven't met one person who's given them a hard time, and, you know, they really give us all that they can, so it's really amazing, you know, to be served by that, I guess.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you guys very much. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to discuss an act on the new appointment of Superintendent to the South Coast Educational Collaborative, the work of Marianne.
No, no, that's, it's just a routine item annually for both the REEDs and South Coast Collaborative Boards.
How about this, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Superintendent Spooner to serve as the Somerset Berkeley Regional School District Representative on the Board of Directors of the South Coast Educational Collaborative in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 4E, as amended by Chapter 43 of the Acts of 2012 for the 2025-2026 school year. Second. A motion by Mr. Pasternak, seconded by Ms. Ashley, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So voted. Next on the agenda, under Business and Financial, we have continued discussion of the 25-26 budget.
Sure, I was going to provide this under Staffing Update, but this is the more appropriate place, I guess. So as you know, during the budgeting process, we had several positions here at the high school slated for elimination, from cafeteria monitors to in-school suspension, hallway monitors, and teachers, and counselors in various departments. Primarily, there were two departments that were identified where reductions in force would be made, those being science and math. Since that time, and once student schedules were loaded, it actually has appeared that there is less of a need of the existing staffing in our World Language Department, and the request to maintain the current staffing in the Science Department. So, and for the non-Somerset School Committee members here, the Somerset School Committee is also, in their budget, approved the re-establishment of a Spanish position at Somerset Middle School. So with the need of a position there at the middle school, the flexibility here to eliminate a position and not eliminate any courses in our World Language Department, I will be tomorrow sending out a request, a voluntary request for transfers to go from the high school to the middle school. So because that is happening, it preserves the science position as of right now. Also, you know, one of the really challenging parts of having two distinct districts, but one teachers' union, and this has happened several times over the last 10 years, a reduction in one district impacts the staffing in the other. So as a result of that, again, Somerset School Committee members here know that a elementary PE teacher, we're consolidating our elementary wellness staffing, there is enough flexibility in their classrooms, in their schedules, where we can still offer the same courses that we have now with one last person. By being members of the Somerset Teachers Association, sometimes the teachers who are at that level, who are really the ones being, where the transfer needs to be made from, have professional status, and then it ends up, results in the bumping of someone without professional status. And within the STA contract, whether it's a reduction in force or non-renewal, there are all these various factors that we have to look at, educational attainment, licensure, evaluations, and at the end of the day, if all is deemed equal, then the least senior person is the one who is being reduced. So that is happening this year, where one of our fantastic PE teachers here at the high school, that position is, that person is being bumped out of a position to make room for someone from the Somerset Public Schools to transfer either voluntarily or involuntarily into that position. So that's the other update that I had that was unforeseen, perhaps, a couple of months ago, but that's what we have right now. And I think besides that, we're still waiting on the House and the Senate to work together to come up with a final budget. Fortunately, Chapter 70 funding seems to be, you know, in a better position now than what it was two months or so ago, and I think the only other question mark is still local health insurance and what those final rates would be. The committee ultimately approved a 10% budget that reflects a 10% increase in those rates, but there's still some potential movement there, which would cause those rates to increase. But we're working with Town Hall, they're keeping us updated on that, and as soon as we know, you will know. Are there any other items relative to the budget?
That's a good topic.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions? That's to the business department? So without, without your public input at the end?
I have a question, just for everybody's benefit, what was the rationale for maintaining the science teacher position as opposed to the math teacher position?
The special education needs primarily, where some, there's been the creation of a smaller class size, I know, and one, we have a growing anatomy and physiology project lead-the-way classes, so some need for some extra sections there, ultimately was the school's recommendation over math. Even though math, we know, class sizes, when you eliminate a teacher, class sizes will be increasing, and from what I understand, class sizes in classes like AP Calc, AP Stats, those will be larger, and as of right now, in class sizes in, you know, the advanced college prep, Algebra I's, II's, geometry, will be not small, but smaller than what we have probably in our more advanced classes.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Thank you for that update.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda, under Business and Financial Matters, is the May financial statement. Ms. Pellerin?
So with the May financial statement, we're approaching, it's a little, right now, we have encumbered and expended a little over 95% of the budget, and we're approaching our final month of the fiscal year. What is not encumbered or expended at this point would be our reconciliation of the final teacher payments, any activity stipends, our last month of substitute cost, and because our healthcare, we prepay one month ahead of time, really understanding what that increase looks like will impact our June payment for July. So those are some items that are outstanding. I know we have budget amendments on for tonight, and we will probably have one more final amendment coming forward, and that would be end-of-year wrap-up, and it would also be if we, the recommendation would come forward if we were going to prepay special education, so we would bring that forward for a final budget amendment.
Do you have any questions about the May financial statement? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is budget amendments. I don't know if we need to walk through them, does anyone have any questions about the amendments as presented? For the superintendent?
Yeah. Thank you, just two things to update. Just wanted to say that we've had a couple of trainings from DESI, talking about tightening their belt, their concerns are cash flow from a federal level. So two things that they pointed out to us, one, we attended a training today with grants, so we'll get on a better rotation with our grants, and I know that we will be bringing forward quarterly updates on the grants. The other thing is our revolving funds, predominantly the regional transportation and circuit breaker, and it was guidance that was released to make sure that any balance that we have going forward is only the dollars that we receive in the fiscal year. So with those two funds, you receive them in the year, you can expend them in the current year, or you can bring them forward one year, so they're tightening the belt on that. So you're going to see there are two budget amendments here that are quite significant, and those are because we made sure that we've expended all of our revolving funds to meet that requirement for end-of-year report, which freed up some money, and we made some adjustments.
Thank you for that update. Anyone have any questions? In that case, I would entertain a motion to approve the budget amendments as outlined in the June 10, 2025 memorandum, Chief Financial Officer Raquel Pellerin. Motion, Members, for, and seconded by Mr. Pasternak, anything further on discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So voted. The next item on the agenda is to discuss an act on some contracts for 2025-2026. The first we have is for electrical repairs from Boston Electric and Telephone Corporation, Beto. Are there any questions?
Those are, there are two bids, and they were opened on May 21st, and those were us, the only bidders, and so we are awarding them the contract.
Okay, in that case, I would entertain a motion to approve the electrical repair service contract with Boston Electric and Telephone Corporation for the period of July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026. Motion by Ms. Carrera, seconded by Ms. Ashley, is there anything further on discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So voted. Next, we have a contract for plumbing services from DDS Industries. Since there's nothing to elaborate on, I would entertain a motion to approve the plumbing services contract with DDS Industries. with DDS Industries for the period of July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026. Second, motion by Ms. Ferrera, and seconded by Ms. Ashley, is there anything further on discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Thank you very much. You know, end of year financials are so much fun, so appreciate all the work you're doing on that. Next item on the agenda under Student Teaching and Learning is recognition of our May Visionaries of the Month. This month, we would like to recognize the following students. Yasmin D'Souza, for Resilient. William Fisher, Academic. Erin Gilmet, Independent. Noah James, Digital Citizen. Peyton Morosco, Digital Citizen. Aleah Morris, Independent. Austin Olivera, Respectful. And Madison Rabello, Empathetic. Congratulations to those students. The next item on the agenda under Unfinished Business is to just discuss subcommittee assignments. I want to think around if we're cleaning up and confirming the subcommittee assignments for this year. I don't know, it doesn't require a vote, but I just don't know if anyone has any questions or concerns, otherwise we will move forward as presented. Next on the agenda is regular superintendent's update, Dr. Spooner.
Okay, thank you. So obviously, we want to first start by congratulating the class of 2025. We had a great graduation ceremony on Friday night. We had 209 students receive their diplomas, including three students who earned certificates of attainment. We have three additional students who will be continuing their studies over the summer and should be graduating in August at our evening school graduation ceremony. Next, congratulations and good luck to our varsity baseball team for earning a spot to the state semifinals. They're playing tomorrow night at UMass Boston against, I think, the number two seed, Reading Memorial. So good luck to them. Last time, we had a number six seed play at UMass Boston. It was successful, so we're hoping the same thing happens this time. Let's see. Just quickly for facilities, since this is pretty much an ongoing item for us. We've had, last week, we had a pre-site construction meeting for the turf field work. Originally, we were identifying yesterday as the mobilization day. But when we met last week, the contractor said there was not that much of a rush to get out here on June 9th. So that work should begin over the next couple of weeks. With still, with the bulk of the work happening during the month of July, and the expectation is that substantial completion is still met by the August 15th deadline. If not sooner, they're thinking maybe final completion could be potentially done around that time. So that work is ongoing. And next week, we have a pre-construction site meeting for the baseball, softball, practice football field work that will also be taking place sometime soon. So just in a matter of a few weeks, the, what is that? The west side of our campus will be very active with different projects taking place out there. And I think, let's see. Oh, and then just one other item. If you notice under the screen up there, there is a soundbar and I think a camera. Mr. Leveque had some Zoom equipment installed, or some equipment installed for us to have better remote meetings. It was just installed on Friday. There's some other work, some other items that go with that. I've yet to test it out with him, but I will get some training so that we can see what's happening there. And then if this solution works, we will copy it for the Somerset Middle School Media Center. And I would just like to add, I know there wasn't the student teaching report on here, the student advisory committee report. But if it's okay with you, if Adrian can slip into the superintendent's update and give the student perspective for the same thing.
Hello, hello everyone. We're almost done. There's three grades instead of four at this school, and the kids that are left can count down the days of school on their hands. Soon we'll be lounging, not worrying about Portuguese homework. I know I'm not already, but you know. But what this also means is our last few days with some staff. I know the budget is rough. It's hard to move things around and even harder to fit things in. But people like Mr. Kuchar, Ms. Deb, Donna Bridget, they give more to this school than just their time. They shape our communities to be better than they can be. Mr. Kuchar goes to every game and has been coaching our hockey team for a very long time. People like Bridget and Dawn, I think maybe know every student in the building and on. They're people that I consider more than just staff, but they are family of the Raiders. Half our bathrooms are barricaded with foam boards, and the other half are being protected by our hall monitors, Ms. Deb. But now we're cutting them out. So what I ask of us is to understand, you know, the impact that removing these people has on our student body. These people's impact on students cannot be overstated. For every student that's come through these doors, they love seeing Mr. Kuchar. For those students who feel safe talking to an adult who understands them, you know, there's Dawn and Bridget for the order in our hallways. You know, we have Ms. Deb. And what students want, I think mostly in the future, is for the person behind the position to be in consideration. Every budget, I feel, should start with the people that we already have and what we plan to do in the future. It should not be the other way around. Thank you.
I just wanted to add regarding graduation, two things. One, if you were on the turf, you realize it's a good thing we're replacing it. Because wow.
We have talent.
So I'm happy to see that that's moving forward. And the other thing is, as much as we obviously congratulate the students who are graduating, I wanted to really extend our thanks and gratitude to all of the staff who worked so hard to put that event together. It is, I know it's a lot of work behind the scenes, our maintenance and grounding custodial staff. So the chairs and the setup, everyone who's involved in that, I would really name names because I know it's a total team effort. But it looks, it's a classy event that I think honors our students the way that they should be. And it's just, it's so executed. And I think it's just, it makes me proud that our staff rises to that occasion each year and works really hard for it to be the advantage of the, so just kudos to everyone involved in that.
And I
There's a lot of other events still going on.
And if I may add, it's, and thank you for acknowledging the staff who make that possible. But it's also members of our teaching staff too, who are working with kids literally the day before graduation to make sure that kids can still walk that night. So I mentioned three students who will continue their studies over the summer. That could have been five, or six, or seven. I don't know exactly the number, but certainly I know of several students who teachers were working with right until the last minute to make sure that work was being made up, and things were progressing so that students had that opportunity and that experience on the Friday night. So thanks to all of them who make that possible. It's, they're doing it quietly, behind the scenes, making sure that students are getting the support they need right up until that last minute.
So next, staffing update.
It's just for information purposes, there are a few, two resignations and one appointment, just for your reference.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have policies for first reading. Who from our policy subcommittee wants to? Ms. Ferrera? So I just wanted to mention, I think we might, if it pleases everybody, I think we might want to table IKE and IKF. I've noticed that IKF is not the updated version in our folder, so not everybody probably gets a look at it because it's not in there. And I think IKE, I'm not sure if anybody had a chance to take a look at it, so. If it makes sense, we can take those too. Let me see, the IKE was pretty much just warning, there was some old information and those 145 credits were just not required at this time, so we just kind of reworded that so it's more current. I'm trying to remember what was the last one, since we talked about this. And then, this is, oh, this is the one that went to council to review the student discipline and the changes in here represent what his suggestions were. Does anyone have any questions? So actually, I had a question just about the student discipline. So the changes that are in the student discipline policy, I'm assuming are consistent with Mass General Law based on the recommendation of council?
Yes.
Are they, are all of these changes, I'm just curious, are they more restricted than required by Mass General Law? Or are they simply a law that is consistent with Mass General Law when it comes to? Does that question make sense?
It does, and I'd have to, I'd have to really compare the two side by side to see. I don't think it's really going above, but I can't say that with 100% certainty.
I really ask because I want to obviously ensure that we're following all of the laws and regulations in honoring student rights, but I also want to make sure that we also wear appropriate and permitted, and we also give our administrators the discretion that they need to make sure that they can maintain a safe environment. So I want to make sure we're consistent, but I want to place additional restrictions on your ability to make those judgments. That's my question. I mean, I don't know if everybody agrees, but maybe we might want to table the top table. As I said, the amended IKF is not in our order, so. It's in, but it doesn't click in with the amendments we're reviewing. So what, if there are no I'm going to take them out of order, so I would entertain a motion to approve for a first reading the policy JIC student discipline? Motion by Miss Solomon, seconded by Mr. Pasternak. Is there anything further on discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. I have a motion to table policy IKE and policy IKF, I'm sorry, IKE promotion retention of students and policy IKF commencement exercise participation, just pending the most updated versions of those policy changes per the policy subcommittee. Motion by Ms. Ferrera? Seconded by Mr. Pasternak, anything further on discussion? Anyone in favor? Had?
Had.
So, okay. The lead reaction of my friend, I thought. That's okay. Okay, thank you. That's a lot of the policies our committee probably can do. Next on the agenda, under Other Matters of Informational, we have the acceptance of the Zachary Dean Memorial Bench. And we have an image of that in your packet.
Right underneath the scoreboard on the soccer field.
And has it already been constructed? Is it, it's ready now?
The bench is ready to go in. The Somerset Highway Department will be installing the cement pad. We just need to ensure that through DigSafe that they're not going, that it's a safe spot to install this. And all of that should take place within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to accept the donation of the Zachary Dean Memorial Bench to the Somerset Berkeley Regional School District. Motion by Ms. Ferrera, seconded by Ms. Ashley. No, Ms. Corvill, sorry. Anything further on discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, so voted. Next on the agenda, we have updates from, where do we start?
Berkeley Public Schools, this fall.
Sure. So we just had, it's typical for our June meeting, it just is super quick, right before town meeting, to approve the budget number. We did that, and our budget was approved. I apologize, but I forgot my notes, so I don't have the specifics. But we were looking at the recommendation from the town, a 1.2% increase, which was obviously devastating. We did end up with a, it was five, around 5%, 5.1 maybe. It's still, it's very, that's still difficult for us, and we're still, there's still, there are about four positions affected in total. Again, I apologize, I don't have the specifics, but a lot of that came from the town giving, from our general stabilization. So even with our four positions and the stabilization money, it's certainly not sustainable, so. A lot is going to happen next year, possible variety discussions, things like that. But it passed, we're gotten through this year, and so other than that, that was really all we did at our last meeting. We have our April graduation next Friday night. So I'll be Friday night. It doesn't rain on Fridays, right there, or just went on Saturdays, so we should be.
Thank you very much for Somerset Public School update.
Okay, so the Somerset Public School Committee met last Tuesday. We celebrated the end of the year with our student representative, Alyssa Souza. We also celebrated our Reader's of the Month at Somerset Middle School for April and May. And we also celebrated four retirees that we have. And we embarrassed them just the way you do here, because I felt we needed to really do that. It really goes over very well, they love it. But, you know, all kidding aside, definitely celebrating the years of service. How many years of service combined? Seventy-nine years of service combined, which was tremendous. We also received an update from Chartwell's Food Service. We discussed and voted to approve the Middle School Student Parent Earnee Handbook for the upcoming school year, as well as the upcoming Somerset Middle School School Improvement Plan. We discussed the entrance age policy, JEB, at length, but ultimately took no action to make any changes to the age at which children are permitted to enter kindergarten in Somerset Public Schools. So ultimately, we will maintain what is currently in the policy. We also voted to approve the reappointment of Dr. Spooner to the South Coast Education Laboratory Board of Directors. We had our May financial statements. We voted to approve budget amendments as well. We also approved our contracts for electrical repairs and plumbing. We received a staffing update from the superintendent with just a few changes. We did have a wellness subcommittee update from Ms. Corville, who serves on that subcommittee for the committee. We also had an update from the redistricting subcommittee, which is obviously a very hot topic on the Somerset side. And we now have a live survey where interested participants can put their name in the hat to see if they are interested in serving on the subcommittee. And we will be bringing, as a subcommittee, the recommendations of who we think might be a good fit to represent the community to the full committee for approval at our July 22nd meeting. So after that time, we will have an official approved list of participants for that subcommittee, and we expect that work to begin at the end of August. Um, and other than that, um, we approved some minutes, had some public input, and that's a wrap on our meeting.
Thank you. Um, next on the agenda, we have topics not anticipated by the chair, 48 hours of events in the room. I just want to, I don't know that it's a topic not anticipated, just last week I was able to come to, the interns did their presentation. I happened to be home that day, so I was able to come. Um, it was fantastic to come and watch them, both the firefighters, uh, EMT paramedics, and then I actually came back for the future teachers and actually won that award with housing authority. Uh, it was awesome to see, we'd love next year, maybe somehow they could come and do some presentation for us, uh, just so the committee can see what's coming out of that program, so. Great, thanks.
Got my, just as I write, is the civic showcase this Thursday?
Yes.
Okay, just. This Thursday at?
Six o'clock, I think.
Six? Six, okay, thank you. In the Student Dining Center, as, or no?
No, it's in the, it's in the gym, in the gym.
Okay, of course. Okay, so if anyone wants to check out the great work that our civic students are doing, um, this Thursday at six in the gym, it's always very cool, and we've often gotten some pretty good ideas from students and actually have committed some of that to this committee, so we'll be forward to that. Action items for, next item on the agenda, action items for future meetings in addition to those discussed this evening. Have any things? Yep? Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda, we have to consider approval of the open session minutes of May 13th to 25th and May 22nd. Twenty twenty-five, we have these minutes. If anyone has any questions, Ms. Solomon, can we take some today? I would entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes of May 13th and May 22nd, 2025 as presented. So, second. Motion by Mr. Pasternak, I'm going to find Ms. Ashley, is there anything further on discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, so voted. Next on the agenda, we have public input. Do we have anyone signed, because we're excited. If anyone wants to participate in public input, have an opportunity to sign in? We have four folks. So, um, just a reminder for format for public input, um, when we have four or fewer speakers, which we have, I have four folks signed up, is there anyone who wanted to participate who did not sign in? Okay, then, um, we ask speakers, um, to, um, have their remarks limited to five minutes, and, um, just please state your name, either your address or your affiliation, and then, um, let you know in five minutes. Um, first, we have Christine Sors.
Christine Sors, 111 Calvin Avenue. Had to make sure there wasn't a mic there, because you can hear me from here to Timbuktu, we know. I'm a chemistry teacher here. I'm also, um, the STA negotiations person for the contact. I know Mr. Schoonover made some comments regarding staffing today, and how we are eliminating some faculty members due to budget cuts. I went to many of those budget meetings in February, April, went to the May town meeting. I understand that we need to watch the budget, we need to be fiscally responsible. One of the things that has been bothering me since the budget approval in mid-May is that it is now June 10th, and some of the teachers, albeit most of the teachers who are being laid off due to budget cuts have not been notified as yet. That disheartens me because you are playing with the livelihoods of teachers. And I understand that there have been some, according to Dr. Schoonover, some other implications, whether we needed a science teacher, or did we need to lose the math teacher, or what's going on with foreign language. But I think a lot of those moving parts could have been, um, done in a more timely manner. Additionally, at the K eight, we know that we were removing or removing a K five phys ed teacher. That was public knowledge, it was in the budget hearings, again, mid-May, we voted on that budget. And the decision was made to remove one of our faculty members, Justin Kucher, who is an integral part of this community. I do not agree that a K eight cut should affect the 912 school or budget. Because by removing a teacher at the, at the 912 level and replacing that teacher with somebody with professional teaching status, you are impacting the budget, albeit slightly, but you are impacting the budget. We've had this occur on two separate occasions, and it has only occurred when they eliminated a professional teacher at the K eight, and there were no non-PTS teachers at that level to displace. We are now displacing a non-PTS teacher with a PTS teacher, where there are two non-PTS teachers at the K eight that could have been displaced. It would not have impacted the K eight budget because they've already eliminated the K five position. But now our budget is going to be impacted slightly because of the increased salary. I do believe that looking at licensure is important, and all of the non-PTS teachers are licensed. It should not be, well, this one has a preliminary license and this one has an initial license, because as a non-PTS teacher, if you're licensed, you're licensed. It should also go by what do they bring to the table? The teacher that is being displaced up here is at every activity after school. He is coaching our young people. He is working the, the games in the gym as a scorekeeper, not a sports person, but they're doing that thing. Okay, so I think all of those pieces should be taken into account, and I don't think they were, I think it was just last man in, first man out. And again, I think that if we're going to do staff cuts, people should be made aware that they're being cut in a timely manner, so they can actually look for another job.
Thank you. The next person for public input is Justin Kucher.
Hello, everybody. Um, my name is Justin Kucher. I'm a physical education teacher here, an ice hockey coach, and I work with the athletic department doing game administration. So I'm a Somerset grad, I was born and raised here, um, graduated in this same building that we stand in in 2016. As a graduate of the school, I take pride in what we do here, in our athletic programs, what we do in classrooms, in the gymnasium, and in the community itself. As many of you know, budget cuts are affecting this district and many others, um, like never before. Today, I was informed that I would be let go from my position due to our district's budget cuts. While I find myself fortunate to have had the privilege of teaching and coaching in this district, the sad reality is that this chapter will be coming to an end. My heartbreak lies with the students and the student athletes alike. They will lose more than a teacher, they will lose a coach, a mentor, a supporter of their academics and athletics and any extracurricular activity they participated, a consistent teacher whom they've grown to trust and respect in just a short time of one year. They will lose a person who was willing to go above and beyond, showing up for students and the community anytime it is possible. As devastating as it is to leave the school and community, I am not what's important in this situation. What's important is our students. In just a year's time, students have formed connections with their teacher that last a lifetime. Unfortunately, they will lose the daily interactions we have and the daily support and motivation they have grown fond of. Students in my class feel respected, trusted, accepted, motivated, heard, and seen. My students and student athletes enjoy the daily life lessons we teach in phys ed classes and on the ice alike. Resilience, hard work, determination, empathy, humility, and teamwork, to name a few. At the end of the day, it is about what's best for the students, school, and community. Like Christine Sors said, um, I do believe we need to factor in other things that take place outside of, um, you know, a licensure. We need to take into, you know, into account what a teacher provides for the entire school and the community itself. I wholeheartedly believe this decision will hurt the most important part of this community, our students, and I hope this is taken into account going forward. Thank you.
The next person for public input is Laura Taylor.
Sorry, I'm going to go to the school committee. My name's Laura Taylor, 535 Neat Street. I have a child that goes to this school. It was brought to my attention, I want to say about a month ago, that there were some changes coming about in the music department. So I'd like to hear a little bit more about that. Am I able to ask questions to the committee or just speak?
Um, you should just speak.
Okay. So, my son was informed by a teacher, by his teacher, that they were going to be moving to the middle school, Mrs. Roach. I didn't take too much of it into consideration until I actually heard it from the school department. And then I received a chain email from another parent advising that Mrs. Isadora is going to be taking over for concert, and she's not trained in woodwind instruments or any other type of brass instruments, things like that. She is, okay, thank you.
All music teachers have to take courses in all different types of instrumentation.
That's why I wanted to be able to ask the question to get that's accurate. Thank you. It's my understanding that she's going to be teaching concert band as well as strings. I'd just like to really understand a little bit more about that, but I guess this is a one-way conversation at this point?
Well, I, I guess what I can say is, um, is that, um, conversations about personnel, that this, this committee, it is not within the scope of our responsibility to make decisions about how to deploy licensed staff, that that, those decisions rest with the administration. And what I would say is that, um, this committee does not and will not have conversations in any public forum about the credentials or.
Of specific of the staff.
And that, um, the committee, I'm just, just to clarify that, that the committee invests, Dr. Schoonover and his administrative team in making decisions about, um, how to employ staff, but this committee does not interfere with or weigh in on, um, specific, um, assignments for staff, because that's beyond our scope, that's beyond our purview, and we would not comment on any member of our collective bargaining units, um, assignments. So that, that authority rests with the superintendent and his administrative.
So I believe the town of Somerset is called the, the Music Town. So what type of strain are we putting on our music department, is my question to the committee?
Thanks. Thank you. Next for public input, we have Gabriel Gonzalez.
My name is Gabriel Gonzalez, I live on 39 Person's Walk, and I'm a student athlete here at Somerset Berkeley. I am speaking here tonight on behalf of Mr. Kucher, my peers in P E, and the Bar C Ice Hockey Team. In my personal experience with Mr. Kucher, the relationship in the classroom was one of shared interests and complete trust. He's a teacher I can share my goals with while getting his own personal opinions and advice in academic and athletic situations. In my experience as a Bar C ice hockey player, he has been one of the most influential coaches I have ever had. When I was in eighth grade, I was exploring options of private school and prep schools. And in doing so, I got into Boston College Ice School. As excited as I was, I quickly came to realize the harsh reality of having little financial aid, which prevented me from being able to attend school and play hockey there. However, within that disappointment, was an excitement to play here at Somerset Berkeley. The first coach to acknowledge me and welcome me into the program was Mr. Kucher. He was the coach that changed so much for me in my high school hockey career, it made me love hockey again, as it was my first time playing again. At the end of the, at the end of this past hockey season, I learned that Coach Snyder was passing on the torch to a new coach. I looked forward to having a new coach, which was most likely would have been Mr. Kucher. This cut would not allow me to have the opportunity to have him as the new coach. He gives students and athletes the opportunity to improve as a hockey player and be greater. He makes people be better as an athlete, student, and an overall man or woman. Within my two years of being a student athlete here at Somerset, I have been through tribulations regarding injuries and motivational issues, especially in the winter of my freshman year. Throughout all these tribulations, Mr. Kucher has been around and needed him, no matter time or place. It would be a travesty to so many people to lose someone who cares so greatly about the community, the players he fosters with, the school and the ice hockey program. While I am aware of the unfortunate realities of necessary budget cuts, I think it could be a devastating loss to the Physical Education Department, the Ice Hockey Team, and the overall community at Somerset Berkeley. The release of Mr. Kucher would be one of more loss than gain. Finally, I would like to close this out by setting forth my statement of how detrimental his loss would be for my time here at Somerset and the entire student body. Thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you, everyone, for the public input. I have just one follow-up question for the office. That's where when, um, decisions about reduction in force, um, unfortunately to be made, I assume that we are following the guidance of the collective bargaining agreement?
About the timeliness of it?
In terms of notification?
Yes.
And, um, similarity in all factors?
Absolutely, and, uh, first of all, as many teacher contracts have dates for, um, non-renewals, reductions in force, ours does not. Uh, the, the only date is the June 15th date in master general law about notifications. But with, uh, within that, it is, I've worked closely with the STA president. Uh, we've met several times discussing possible scenarios, rationale for, for these decisions. And so everything- And so everything is, is fully aligned within the, the collective bargaining agreement between the school committees and the Somerset Teachers Association. And one of the other things, and I know, you know, I don't want to address specific comments made, but just, you know, it was very public that there was, the only reason why we're facing these is because of, of budget constraints. Typically, when, if there is a non-renewal of a, of a teacher who does not have professional status, legal advice from our school's legal counsel is always, keep it vague, don't give a reason. And that's what a non-renewal typically is for a person without professional status. We know that these, that the reasons here, it's, it's not because of performance, it is because of budget cuts. And then knowing that that's happening, if I follow the, the sort of the typical, the standard non-renewal, because the impacted people, potentially two at the middle school, one at the high school, and, and PE and health, because they don't have the professional status, the STA, as I was informed, had some pretty good ground to grieve it, because there was a budgetary reason, there was a reason why this was happening. So those, those conversations took place, and Mrs. Sors also talked about, and maybe, you know, Mr. Kucher as well, about all the other things that teachers do. And when we look at the contract, it's three things. It's educational attainment, licensure, and merit, based on evaluations. And we know teachers bring so much more to the table than just those things. And several years ago, there was a reduction here at the high school of a, of a teacher with professional status. And it was one of the, one of the things we're comparing two teachers, and a more senior teacher was the one who was ultimately eliminated, but looking at all of those other factors. And the STA grieved it eventually, and we worked on essentially a rubric. I personally wanted to quantify, you know, try to develop a way of rationalizing, you know, or introducing all of those other things that teachers bring to the table. And the STA wanted that as well. We developed this system, and ultimately received enough, enough pushback where the STA, I think, officially withdrew that item. And so we never were able to actually, it never came to fruition. But it was something that we attempted to do a number of years ago. And, you know, perhaps situations like this, it brings it to the table, maybe we, we should introduce something like that again, because it does allow us to look at the involvement that teachers have in the school community and, and bring that as factors into the decision. Because currently, right now, by the, the contract, they're not factors. To the detriment of people who work very hard and do so much to support our students, support the school, and just make it a better place. So maybe that's some, some work that we can work with the STA again, if, if they're willing to, I don't know. But that's a possibility.
Anyone have anything else? In the case, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Second question, if anyone's action in favor? Aye.